Call the council meeting to order Tuesday, June the 4th. It's about 5:35 PM right now. This time I ask all of them to silence their comments. We're gonna have invitation by Councilman O'Reilly and then followed by the question.
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and conduct the business of the city. Thank you for being so good and so kind to all of us. We pray God for wisdom, pray for understanding, pray for patience on tonight. We pray God you will hear our concerns and our prayers on tonight, bless us all. Keep us in perfect peace and help us draw closer together from these times of prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Chair.
Councilman Templeton, this is Adam, Vice President of the Council. Vice President of the Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
Mr. Sanders. This thing won't go on long. Thank you, sir. Next, we have approval, approval of amendments down on May 21st, 2024.
Sir.
Have you got motion and second? Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President of the Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have recognition awards. I'm turning this over to the mayor. At this time, we're gonna, he has some appointees and we're gonna go over one by one. After the call is finished.
Yeah, um, this evening I am speaking in cooperation on five nominees for the planning of his own committee. The folks came in from the Hillman. Council has the applications.
The first name we have is Miss Shanta Hillman for planning his own commissioner. Do y'all have a motion?
I'm gonna do it, sir.
Okay, do y'all have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
Thank you. The next person is Mr. Ty Yarou.
Okay, do y'all have a motion on that?
Some.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
The third nominee is Ms. Dean Wood.
I'm making more of a second.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
The fourth person is Reverend Keaton Miller.
I make a motion.
We have a motion. I'm gonna make a second on it. Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Roll call, Father.
The next person, sir.
You have a motion and second.
I'll, never.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Smith.
The fifth and final person is Mr. Overfugger.
Some.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
All right, back to the close, the planning and zoning nomination process for those. We now run, we have no adoptions or resolutions, but we begin to amend the agenda for two emergency ordinances. The one we're gonna have to ask for amendment was given to us today. So we're gonna go up for amending the agenda for this. We're not voting on this just yet until after it's been amended. So the first one we have is emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with O'Reilly Engineering LLC to conduct a hydraulic and hydro- a hydrological and hydraulic study required by FEMA for the closeout of the Hurricane Ida FEMA disaster audit and reimbursement expenditures used by the City of Obalusa for cleanup and recovery. We have done this in the past, but at this time, all we're doing is amending the agenda. Which, uh-huh? We're amending the agenda to put this on tonight's, this is emergency ordinance. So we have to amend the agenda. Do I have, all right, let me get the recording together. I got one, one moment, okay? All right. We're amending the agenda to put this on the agenda. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda only?
I make a motion.
Sir.
Okay, so the public will know that this doesn't require public participation. Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
Now, uh, now we have, this is the part where we're actually gonna do this in emergency ordinance. Once again, I'm gonna reread the ordinance. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with O'Reilly Engineering LLC to conduct a hydraulic and hydrological and hydraulic study required by FEMA for the closeout of the Hurricane Ida FEMA disaster audit and FEMA reimbursement of expenditures used by the City of Obalusa for cleanup and recovery. Uh, that hurricane took place in 21. So, uh, this time, do I have a motion and second?
I make a motion.
Sir.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Now, public participation. While you're coming, you have three minutes. This is a business hour. So you come out there and say your, bring the microphone down and state your name.
I'm here to bring your name.
All right.
My question is, are you now voting on the amendment?
No, we're, we are voting on the amendment.
You voted to amend the meetings.
Amend, we voted amend the agenda. Now we're allowing you to participate in questions.
You amended the agenda, did you amend the ordinance? No, that's what I'm getting at.
Now, we're gonna keep moving. Okay, next question. We just amended, just to back off, we, we have already amended the agenda that's ours.
Good evening everyone, how's everybody doing?
Uh-huh.
Yes, you're.
State your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, last time I gave you my address, 14th and 4th, yes, true.
All right, go ahead now.
I'm just here because the last time I was here, you know, some things going on. I just wanna know, is everything okay? You know, you have the, uh, you all moving on with the, with the, uh, last situation we had? Shut down the city and everything? Are y'all together on all that?
We're all here to discuss emergency ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm learning, I'm learning.
This is.
Public participation.
Yeah, yeah.
I can come back and say that?
Yeah, you signed it.
Yeah, then you signed the sheet already.
I have signed the sheet, but I, I'm just signing it so I can speak.
Yeah, that's fine, come back here for, for participation.
You're probably need this, man.
Okay, all right, okay.
Now, we're here to discuss the, uh, what happened with Hurricane Ida.
Morgan, I'll see if there's a, uh, I'll tell them the rules when we get. I don't, uh, see, uh, problem here. This has to be done. About that to be done. And we have amended our deal for put this all the act on back, it's an emergency. So, you know, what's the order? Why that to draw the vote and get it approved, so the work can be done.
I think, I think before you go in further, the work has been done. We're trying to get reimbursement, what was done back two years ago. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Right, look, just to get context, the last administration paid 1.1 million dollars or something like that to dig some ditches. Uh, we keep getting complaints about whether the work is done or not, but look, we've gone to FEMA to get our reimbursement. That's what we're working on. It should've been done back early 2022. Here we are in middle of 2024, we're just trying to get our money back. The study a lot, this study is required by FEMA to get our money back.
All right, Mr. Federal, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
State per 1931, be with place. Are you all working hard with the mayor to try to get this money back?
Yes.
You should, 'cause I don't see you all working too hard. Everything, seeing like me, everything the mayor tried to do, y'all tried to go against it. That's the truth. I can see what I see. Okay, this is written for me, I gotta give you that. So, is it gonna get the money? We got the vote on, we trying to. Are y'all gonna vote yes? We trying to. Well, go ahead, go ahead, who is it? I would question.
All right, anyone else in the public which should speak? All right, at this time, no more private participation, we move on to council discussion.
Yes, I do have council discussion. And as the mayor indicated, this is money that we just trying to get back and we give, be given the opportunity to invest it as council members. My typical question is that, it did close out in 2021. Ms. Brown, she did inspection, uh, uh, she signed off on inspection date in 2023. So it has been that long, but we been trying to get our money back, uh, in spite, okay? My second thing I ran across was that, uh, O'Reilly, uh, they did have a couple of issues a couple of years back, but I was able to contact the Louisiana Professional Engineering Land Surveying Board and he's, he's all good with his license, his license is good until 2025. So, uh, that's, that's all this is about, is getting money back. The areas that were, uh, that were surveyed and, and, uh, work was done was on Mary Street, uh, East 8th Street, also 301 Eunice Avenue. Uh, number third was Avenue I and the fourth area was 120, uh, Napoleon and Austin Road. Those were the four areas that, that was done. Uh, we were listed as a client, O'Reilly was listed as to respond it and it did work for FEMA, so now we're trying to get our money back. Those are my comments.
Any other council discussion?
I would just like to add to, um, going forward, that this must be done so that we're able to receive the replay of the state audit as well.
Plus it won't leave us in hope.
Correct.
Yeah. All right, at this time, there's no further council discussion. I'm gonna ask for roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
Okay, this, uh, so you will note that this will come back as a regular ordinance per charter. So we'll have to try and put this, uh, introduce it as a regular ordinance and everything straightened out with that, and then next is June the 18th agenda. All right, the next one, we have another emergency ordinance that we're going to have to amend the agenda. Um, this one here is a, an emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Obalusa to enter into a master engineering services agreement between the City of Obalusa and Professional Engineering Consultants Corporation to construct a terminal apron and connector taxiway rehabilitation. Uh, this is the company PEC that we always do business with and the window is closing on this thing fairly quick. That's why this is running as an emergency ordinance. Uh, all right, council, at this time, I'm gonna ask you to amend the agenda for the purposes of this particular ordinance.
Some.
Okay?
Sir.
All right. And as well as the public is concerned, this, uh, just, we're amending the agenda only, which does not require public participation. Roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
Okay, now I'm gonna reread it once more as an ordinance, an emergency ordinance. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Obalusa to enter into a master, uh, engineering services agreement between the City of Obalusa and the Professional Engineering Consultants Corporation to construct the terminal apron and connector taxiway rehabilitation. Do I have a motion and a second?
Some.
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, public participation, and Mr. Sanders, you're free to talk about this as involved as airport as well, if you wish to speak.
You can wait. You can wait until they.
All right, who's first? Any public participation? Just come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Let me do it on record.
This is simply, uh, an agreement with our current engineering company to, uh, to design the improvements for the airport. They're receiving money from the FAA, uh, contrary to what people are saying about the airport is closed, the airport is open. Uh, revenues are up right now. This is strictly contained within the airport improvement plan. Thank you.
And also, before Mr. Sanders speak, um, we definitely need, um, this to pass at council people because the aprons are, um, basically it's a lot of prepping, it's a lot of things that need to be replaced. And if y'all have not had the opportunity to go out there and, um, you know, take a look around, I'd ask you that to do so. And Mr. Sanders will, um, echo off of me that this basically needs to be done, should have been done, but, you know, it's a federal grant and, you know, we do need to get all the money that we can.
Um, that's correct, um, the, uh, the apron is actually been cracking for a while. We have seen a lot of damages that are, that are not in play, that are really look bad right now. So this will actually improve those things and actually make the airport look more presentable, do more policy, bring more revenue in. Because now all of our revenues are coming into the airport, there's none going anywhere else. We're making money with the airport, let's keep doing it, let's keep, uh, on positive path, airport ungro.
Thank you.
And then, just so we know, Mr. Sanders, this will be no cost to the city, right?
Absolutely none.
Good, okay, all right.
Council discussion.
All right, council discussion.
I do have council discussion. Yes, this is the leaded airport and I speak with PEC, uh, earlier this afternoon. The timeline is, is, is approaching for this, we need to, we should've been here and, but we need to get this in. The contract signed and as, uh, Councilman Urban indicated, there is no cost, uh, to the city on this and in fact, it was a grant that was written, I think, beautiful as a town, so, um, I agree that, uh, this is an urgency, this is why we need to, this is why this is an emergency, because it's an urgency. In other words, thank you.
Any other council discussion? All right, thank you, no other council discussion, roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly. Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
So you would know, this will also appear on our next agenda, will be introduced as a regular ordinance per our city charter on the June 18th agenda. Uh, so just to let y'all know about that. Now, proceeding with the regular introduction of ordinances. Uh, our first, this is back to the agenda. Uh, we have a first ordinance to be read by Councilman Kate.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract to complete the arbor replacement rotating assembly model. And that's for the, uh, station three pump two. And it's discussed at our next, uh, council meeting.
On June 18th?
Yes.
All right, the next, uh, introduction of ordinance will be read by Councilwoman Kate.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract to complete arbor replacement rotating assembly model. And this is for station three, pump three. And it will be discussed and voted upon at our next council meeting. And that's primarily because it was an emergency, goes through two emergency ordinances at our next meeting.
The next, we have public care and adoption of ordinances. Uh, this will also be, uh, we're actually voting on this tonight, this is by Councilwoman Kate.
An ordinance setting arbitrary tax rates and leveling such taxes for 2024 as required by law. Now, this was discussed, uh, during our meeting with, uh, Mr. Wolf, whom he's here last time. And this is something that we do yearly, setting our, our meals tax rates for, uh, City of Obalusa. The total meals this year is, um, forty, I'm gonna say, forty-two point twenty-five. That's the total amount. And it's different rates and, as I said, it is done at our, uh, yearly here at the, uh, city.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
Some.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. Now, public participation, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. All right, there'll be no public participation. Next, we have, uh, council discussion. Any council discussion? Okay, if you got council discussion, roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
The next ordinance we have to be read by, and this will be voted on tonight, will be by Councilwoman Kate.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract to repair a sewer pump at the Amanda Court Lift Station, this is Allen Highway 21, I believe. And we have discussed it in the emergency ordinance. And, uh, several council meetings ago, and tonight, as, uh, Councilman Urban indicated, we're to vote on it. It's been repaired, but we're to vote on it tonight.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
Some.
Sir.
All right, public participation, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Okay, if you have public participation, any council discussion? All right, roll call please.
Councilman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
All right, with that, that concludes the business part of the Obalusa City Council meeting for Tuesday, June the 4th. We now move to public participation. The first, uh, public participant that we have is Ms. Ellen Carter. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, Ms. Carter. We will have approximately two minutes.
Um, Allen 1406, 16th and 4th. Um, I'm just gonna go on this stuff. Um, the lady at 1300, um, it's a 1200, 1300 block one. I'm gonna buy that picture, so y'all wanna look at it. I don't know what kind of hole this is, but she's afraid. And it don't have a street there, so if a cop coming at you, you gonna have to go in. And it's iron, if y'all wanna look at the picture.
1200 and 1300, block one, street, which, so. She called me today about it.
Um, another thing, um, I'm back at my speed home, if y'all didn't. Yeah, yeah. Um, my kids was out there, uh, last night and a cop came down the road flying. So my granddaughter, my old, she's seventeen, she called the police department. They did come out and sat there a few minutes, but it didn't come back. But it's dangerous and I hope none gonna happen if we y'all decide to do something for that street.
Where's that, where's that?
Uh, 1406, 16th and 4th.
Where at, 14?
Hickory.
Hickory? 1406, 16th and 4th.
And it's a four-way stop, they're just not going no good. They trying to do it.
That's fine.
That's it, thank you.
That's fine, thank you. Uh, the, the next one I have is Ms. Gladys McGee.
Oh, okay.
And Ms. Gladys, as you come, you will have two minutes.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record and your two minutes will start after that.
Gladys McGee, 14th and 4th, and 16th, but we're just gonna handle it. As I was saying earlier, the last time I was here, you know, this thing that was going on. So is everything okay now? Are you all in the way, you know, the police, uh, keeping the city working and moving? No shutdowns? No shutdowns?
Uh, Mr. McGee, uh, I will address that, because he's, Mr. McGee is the manager, so. Thank you, Mr. McGee, for your question, thank you so much. Uh, the freeze that, that the council had was vetoed that Friday before meeting on that Monday. And afterward, there is an internal freeze for internally, you know, but, uh, it, it affects the internals of the, of, it's not about shutting the, the city down. It's, it's the one in the past was not about shutting the city down.
Well, I, I was just saying, you know, I, I believe Obalusa's a small city, you know, it ain't really shouldn't be that difficult. Cause this is a beautiful city and the city been shut down long enough and we need to move on and go on. And Gladys, my classmate, is she, I go through her, through there to, uh, Boy and Grill, and that is a big old bump there. I mean, man, you tell your car, if you, if you don't be careful, uh, is, is anybody working on that? What, what's that, Ms. Gladys?
What's the address?
What's the address, Gladys? Your address? 1915, uh.
Right, so.
But Gladys, I tell you, right, that's a bad, that's a bad spot, you know, and I said, I'm gonna say something about it. I'm going out, I spend my dollars, work all the time, you know, back and forth. But anyway, I'm glad y'all are working together and getting along and, and working with the mayor, cause we need this. We need this, we need everybody to work together, everybody have their opinions and take differences, but we can, we can agree without being disagree.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Next, we have Ms. Wendy Dupont. Ms. Dupont, as you come, you will have approximately two minutes, starting after you state your name and address for the record.
Wendy Dupont, Bogalusa Rebirth, or five oh one C three nine, our organization, our office is at three oh five Avenue B. For the public record, I would like to put the following facts into the minutes. On April ninth, twenty twenty-four, I visited public works on behalf of Bogalusa Rebirth to pay for water and sewer connections for an ongoing housing development project. We were declined or denied service on the grounds that the city was waiting for the residential fee schedule we approved. As you know, that schedule was not approved, but it's my understanding that the city continues to charge residents a inflated rate. On May seventh, Angela Adams, the new employee of Office Community Development and code for Sir Panera Mark, visited our job site, where we were conducting network, and explained that the project was unlawful and that we needed to stop. They did not present any type of formal notice inside, or did they cite a statute or violation. Yesterday, June third, I was yet again declined or denied water and sewer services. Again, was not provided with valid legal reasons as to why the city believes our activities are not within compliance of the city's building ordinances. Richardson Town Replantation is a one point nine million dollar federally funded development project in which one point three million dollars of HUD funds have been allocated to our organization. We have been through the rigorous threshold period and received both an authorization we use grant funds from HUD and an official head of super city from the state of Louisiana. We are constructing eight simultaneously homeownership units, a couple of these units have already been pre-sold. To date, we have received no official correspondence that validates factual efficiency. I can assure you, considering this being a federally funded project and the parachutes issued of our permits, we can follow all zoning requirements. Quite frankly, I feel as if I am being.
I have just got two minutes, so thank you, Ms. Dupont.
I have a question, it's difficult, and I don't want to wait till the end, because I don't want to miss this. On June the third, you were declined watering the sewage, which means.
They found to accept my payments.
Accept payment?
I have come into the office with my checkbook twice to make payments, and they will not accept my payments. So they're unable to cite what violation that we are breaking.
Okay, so you were willing to pay for the connection?
Absolutely, I have a checkbook and everything.
Thank you.
Okay, the next public participant that we have is Mr. Marvin Austin. Mr. Marvin, uh, Mr. Austin, as you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. After you state your name and address, your two minutes will start.
My three minutes?
Your two minutes will start.
I'd say three minutes, not two minutes.
It's, it's three on, it's three on business items, two on public participation, Mr. Austin.
One minute is Marvin Austin. Seven thirty-six, my guy. At the last meeting, when the council was, uh, when the council Melry, said he had sit on the council eight years. And that, uh, he had served as president. And this, the year, there had been a chapter recalling, I was remembering, I was trying to recall. I also sit on the council eight years. I never had the desire to be president, but I made the president after that. When the council was there, I was trying to run the council. The cabinet that he wanted, I made sure he did it. But I wanted to share up this. It was a couple of work that issued a thing, wasn't it? And I had to take the right decision from my decision. And it was against grinding of a lot of people. I had about fifteen young, saw the older than me, I saw the younger than me. He basically threatened me if I didn't vote the way they wanted me to vote. That they were gonna have me, I forget it. So my spirit revival told me, he said, what you doing? Brother Austin, he's right. He said, but you gonna be a prideful. And I stood, and I paid that price. It came in after, I wasn't related. It's all old, and saw the younger, it was about fifteen of them, and I wanted to leave this for two. It don't have to be the public, you gonna do the right thing around that thing. All the little children, they're a little longer than us.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Um, we're going to ask the public participants, as you come there, we are going through a storm, and we do reserve the right to preempt it if it gets very bad, preempt this council meeting. We are through with the business items, we are monitoring the weather this time. So, next public participation, please speak. Thanks for loud into the microphone, so we can, we can hear you. We have, on the next one, we have Ms. Lattice Lampkin. Ms. Lampkin, you will have, you'll have two minutes, after you state your name and address for the record.
Ms. Lattice, I took the ten hours to grow in. The public works came out and repaired the, uh, the street. But it's still need some more work done, because it's, it's every big humps in the street. They need to be smoothed, smoothed out a little bit, because anybody's car come from there. The bottom of, the dirt that's hitting the bottom of their car, because it's a big hump there. And it's not being smoothed out, so we need that done, as, I need that done as soon as possible. And I've been trying out, I'm waiting for them to go ahead and complete that, because it's causing a problem with the, uh, the big trucks coming from the game. And as I reported before, I had called, City Hall, um, City Hall, telling them about the dogs loose in that area. And they had not gotten it, because they're roaming in front of everybody's house, and not, sometimes not letting anybody out of the house. Or either run up, up the street or whatever, and it needs to be checked. And another concern I have is the graveyard, that graveyard, Bogalusa City graveyard, Bogalusa graveyard is a horrible mess. Graves are, are open, some are sitting out, some got tarp thrown over them, and that really needs to be addressed. That is horrible. And from my understanding, it was money given out, uh, money for that to be fixed, and it has not in the past year. But these graves that are open with tarp over them, and some graves are sitting out, out of the ground with tarp over them, open, uh, over them. So I would, I would, please, I've just been, y'all just check on all of this. But this is hard, uh, graveyard, it's looking like the graves sitting out, and some of them are open. And, you know, if people don't want to come, people don't want to go out there at all. But please, if you can, just, just check into that, and just walk out there and see the mess that's out there. There's so much smoke, there's a shame, at the Bogalusa Cemetery, thank you.
Thank you.
I went out there one day, and I found one that, assuming maybe, uh, the tree can't bear on, y'all posted it coming in at home. So, yeah, I needed a call back here to City Hall. And I, I was told that that's the family's responsibility. But I can't say, they gave me a tarp. And I need covered it over there, because I don't know if, uh, has it blocked. Because if it's not blocked, you know, can't, can't hold it. So I needed, I had, uh, they also sent a couple of figures, that the city cannot grow on that tarp. So I spoke to the family, and I asked them if it was okay with my parents. And I was told that I could do that, because of the shape there. Yeah, it's been like, uh, about three or four years, that on that corner there, like coming out on that corner right there, in the back. It's been like that for about four years. But I walked through that, right from there, and, uh, as a matter of fact, I think this tape's in there.
Sorry, it's on the table, you know, my company's.
Yeah, the same casket, the casket was, the copper broke, and the casket was being jumped. And then it got another hurt where the casket, the, uh, graves are getting more over, because they're being, being worse inside the street. Talking about now, I think it was over two more. Yeah, and then we go to turn, you know, even though I'm a limo driver and I had it put there, it's not saying that the limo, you know, it's just an actual haul truck, truck, who has put there, that, that hump to me, that hurt, and don't even make it that over. Yeah, so that's what happened, yeah. But, you know, like you said, the other grave, it's been like, and I know it's been like this about four years, that, uh, that something fell on it, cracked it, and the, the casket down on it. But what I was told was we purchased this, and it's the hours and it's the cost.
Also, also, I was like, I said this, Lattice, I was, I was like, wait until it turned to tar. But as you know, when that started, a couple of years ago, I didn't take liberty to contact the state cemetery board, and we had five sponsors that were on the council for the cemetery board. And we each took up at least five different, uh, crips to prepare. And each council person and liberty, uh, had given, you know, a contract, pre-contract, or a contractor. I know I had mine, I took, signed off, it was in the bill. But in, in that being said, in keeping, uh, monitoring to make sure that those crips were done properly. You know, especially, I took District B, Councilwoman Smith was in, Councilwoman Creek, you know, Doug, Doug Ritchie and Ms. Dixon. She said, we all took, you know, terms as far as sponsoring, because a lot of people, they, the family members, they didn't have funds to, to redo those crips after. And they came in, and, uh, the local, uh, you know, the local newspaper, it is in the local newspaper, I can send you a copy of that. But we did everything that we could in order to get those repaired. The one you were speaking about? Yes, it was, it was never, I don't believe the lady did it in my district at the time, but now she does live in my district. And a couple of years ago, I did contact Public Works on it, and we, it was not a decision if it was, uh, a fault of a public works truck or from someone. And I know at, at the time, a couple of years ago, they were investigating, and I did contact Public Works on it. And I would get with them on again, I would call the, the, uh, the family member, because she did not, she did not have a fund, to survive, to repair that. And, uh, thank you, Ms. Councilwoman Tate, for getting that tarp over there, because there's been many tars putting over that, that particular, uh, crypt, that's the damage, but, and I had even called FEMA again, well, I called the public, the state cemetery board again, to see if they could, you know, possibly put that, you know, into their listing, but at the time, you know, I just ran into a brick wall, so. I agree with them, we need to keep our cemeteries up. I did get a call about Councilman Erwin and I, I received a call about tree falling in, uh, in Panama Cemetery, across the entrance of it. So both our cemeteries, that's where our loved ones are buried, and we do need to agree with it. We need to make sure we keep aiming up and keep those sites up, yes.
Ms. Lampkin, for your work order purposes, because we want to make sure your work order is entered into our work order system. What is your address to be?
Nineteen fifteen, Rose Pearl Line, East.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
And, and, uh, Mr. Martin, I've been had, uh, cinder blocks and tree stumps to block that off. My yard is a mess, because I can't get out there on my yard like I want to, because I have to block it off to keep the big trucks from coming into your yard.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's close. We want to just make sure we go, get some type of documentation, so Mr. Johnny, how does the Public Works Director can perform that work order when, when Zach comes there, which is very, he's a busy man, he's got lots of work to do.
I'm, I'm not certain, uh, I'm not certain what's going on, but, uh, Ms. Lampkin has had this problem for a long, long time.
I've been out there.
I think everybody loves me out there, and just, you know, while we can't get it repaired properly, you know, I, I hope.
My yard is wet from it, you know, and when I ride, I'm all, I'm walking side to side, side to side, I'm scared, I might curl over or whatever, and I'm on it. But, um, it's been over seventy years that this has been going on, and it, uh, it really needs to be taken care of. And, you know, the, it's, I mean, it's.
Ms. Lampkin, I'm, I'm in total agreement, like you said, I've been out there. I saw you in the red zone like two months ago, I told you, we got the contractor on call to come do it, but we can't do it until the budget is passed. Everybody sits up here and says, we need this work order done, they call line administration, we need this tree cut, this needs to happen. Guess what? Operator's not gonna ask me about none of that, and they ask me why I went over this a lot of half, that everybody's so bent down to shake about. So I have to stay with the parameters until the budget is passed. I can't do anything unless it's a dire emergency, and that's why we keep bringing these pumps to the council. Because if the, the pump's not working, we can't flush the toilets. We are only focusing on emergency stuff right now, I promise you. As soon as we get this budget passed, contractor will be out there to help you out. First of all, we need heavy equipment operators, we got the operators that talk too big for the city workforce with the equipment that we have. So then we get ready to call contractor, like I told you, you know, we're still in the process of budget, so. Once that's done, we'll be out there to get done, I promise you.
All right, thank you.
And I've been, Ms. Lampkin, I ended up here, not to take too much time, but, um, and Mr. Chest is here, and he can attest to it. Um, the crips that I have turned over to him, he did get done, and now, except for one person, um, and we don't know. I recently spoke to Mr. Chest, uh, April, we go over that month about this issue, and I was told that one of the, um, constituents did not release a check to him to get those done. However, when you do go to the city, it is making it out there, so we are working the prison, the dugout out there. Um, I called and Mr. Patterson got the team right on to it. I made a, um, concern when we went out and had a pipe out there, water was just going everywhere. They came right on, they fixed it, they were jumping in the spot. Um, also, it was a tree leaning between and over, I called my brother, he came out, he cut the tree. Also, and I want to thank Mr. Kevin Drummond for taking his time out, because he's been working in both of the cemeteries, trying to help whatever he can do. So, um, it was him, doesn't, you know, take a whole rocket scientist, but we are trying to, like you say, the cemetery does need attention. As Ms. Penny said, once you purchase that product, it belongs to you, but if we're out there and we see something, I wouldn't make you wrong, but we do try to get it done and address or put tars on, um, Mr. Chest and T R P will talk about it, and his remarks, he do. He will notify the family, P C and D one with their braces, and we can contact them to let them know. So, but I am agree with you, um, hopefully, um, Ms. Kate and I, we had discussed, we just haven't came up with a date yet to do a cemetery cleanup. Hopefully, everybody will be on board, the citizens and everybody that can come out and help. So we do thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, next we have Ms. Chasten Beckham. And Ms. Beckham, as you come, you will have two minutes, that we should start after you state your name and address for the record.
Chasten Beckham, eighteen twenty-three Avenue B. The first issue is, I would like an answer from Ms. Bailey, and I have questions at the last meeting about the two hundred thousand dollars transferred out of the public's payroll account. The second thing is, I would like an update on the, on the parachute sewer system. And the third thing is, I would like to refute the statement put out by the city regarding the issue, uh, the article in the Daily News saying that that was not a public records request. It was a public records request, it just was not under the Daily News, it was undermined.
And if you, if you want to, administration can respond either now or.
I'm sure I answered Ms. Bailey, because I asked that question, it completes that.
Yeah, they can, they can be there, whatever they like to.
Well, first of all, let me, uh, thank you for pointing that out to me. I did look into it, and you're absolutely correct. It's an internal mistake, and I can promise you, it will be fixed before this year is over.
It's been over a year, it should have already been for that.
I don't think so.
It's June twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. It's June twenty-second of twenty twenty-three.
Who's back in the state?
Yeah, let me ask you something, have you ever made a decision?
I have.
Okay, well, yeah, blame it or not. I've seen some.
So, it doesn't usually take me a year to correct mine, though. Especially after it's been pointed out.
Well.
My wasn't it just the same?
This is, this is, I didn't get here until late October and I was working on the budget. And that's been my, uh, that's been my, my absolute job since I got here. And it's only been since February that I've been able to look at the system itself and find errors. And then I found some, uh, unfortunately, what I'm finding is if former administration can some, some great idea of the former mayor managed to talk all the employees out of working for this mayor right here, and it's just about all of them. So I hope that no one, even if no one in this city, I roll through with that door and we were locked out. I know she did all that.
There's no need to, but everybody knows the truth.
I, I, I'm just.
So where did the money go? That's the original issue, where did the money go?
Where it came from, originally. I'm gonna move back to General Fund. No, I'm sorry, it's gonna move back to the, uh, the plaza here, the plaza here.
All right. Next, we have Mr. Tobias Roberts. Mr. Roberts, as you approach the microphone, you will have two minutes immediately starting after you state your name and address for the record.
Tobias Roberts, eleven twenty-seven Avenue Two. Didn't make it to the last, but he glad I did. The public was on full, uh, press, huh?
Yes.
I mean, it was all about how long you can speak. I thought we lived in a democracy, not a dictatorship. Everybody up this way is supposed to be leaders, not dictators. Nobody elected a damn one of y'all to be a dictator. We want leaders, Volusia is suffering from the lack of leadership. Real talk.
Real talk.
All the way around, ain't nobody exempt. You wanna put people, you can't say your name, can't say your name. Y'all put Mr. Rich out here for saying something that a councilman would do. How you can't speak what y'all do? Y'all ain't no better than nobody else. Mr. Sherry got a pill and called this Mr. Keith Murray and I and drilled him and it went on. The public matters. The public matters, the public is what y'all supposed to be and what. Y'all want the public, not the opposite. It ain't the other way around. Y'all here for the public to serve the public and do the public work, not y'all own bit. This is not China, this is not Russia. Real talk, it's sad, but they, and y'all think it's okay. It's not. People, go out the vote. Get everybody, young people, if you're Volusia, see, they ain't here, but they miss this and this, and they don't see it. Get rich, go out the vote, I don't get fake love. Cause that's just what it is. Y'all not with the people or for the people. Period. It don't take long to say, tell the truth, thank you, Mr. Mark, you ain't got to say it here.
All right, Mr. Chester. Mr. Chester in Aprils. Uh, as you approach the, um, microphone, Mr. Chester, you have two minutes immediately starting after you state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Chester, eighteen oh seven Chalobah Street. Um, I just wanted to elaborate just a few minutes on the cemetery. Um, I had a good public works, uh, great blog, our cemetery looked a hundred percent better than what we have with the passing of the straight. Both cemeteries look great. Now, we do have a couple of crips that's open, um, it's got the tops on it, but I can clear that up for you guys. Um, we have a tree that fell on three of the vaults, which, um, two of the vaults has been repaired by the families. One of the vaults is still pinging and we're working with the family now. They're trying to determine if you want to bury everybody in the ground, um, that's gonna be the least, you know, cost. So what we're gonna do is, when they make the decision, they're really trying to locate the husband. Uh, they do have a family that lives in a local city, but the husband still lives. And they're trying to, you know, contact him and see if we be okay or we put the remains in the ground. Because the vault costs more money, it's cheaper to put it in the ground. Yes, the casket did, um, got, uh, a little damage on it, but it is a secret casket. So there's no threat of nobody can open the casket if you got pro laws and all that. I don't think nobody that serious to go out there and do that. Uh, because that particular casket that the young lady had is a secret and the family gets the key to it. So the family's got the key to it and here to fit and here to open it to get up. But I don't think nobody's gonna be out there crying and opening and saying, if it is, they should go to prison for the rest of their life. And, uh, on the other one, uh, over there on the corner, the south corner, uh, this particular vault only needs a vault lid. No, the family don't have it. And I set out what I'm gonna get with her. I'm probably just gonna donate her a lid just to resolve that. She don't have it, you know, and I know the family well. And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna take the money from my pocket and just buy her a lid. That's all the vault needs, is just a lid. The base of the vault needed to catch none of its damage. Okay, and, uh, the next area, I just wanted to ask for, when I'm a police department manager, patrol guy, some of this stuff I hear pieces coming up asking questions about this hole, this hole over here. The police department, seemingly, gotta be hitting these same holes. What's wrong with me trying to let them report some of this? You know, that wasn't just coming here to resolve some of this. If the police ain't hitting the hole, then they not patrolling. You know, but some of it's real bad and I took a look the other day. Last council meeting, a young lady come up and bought this over here on Slum Street across from the bank, the first. That road is deep. We could really gonna push them that far or something in it. You know, it's real deep, but I just think, I, I just suggest, it ain't gonna hurt to take a month in it for the police just to dig, take that down and turn in whoever you turn it into. And then I could make it get resolved quicker than that. And if you got any other cemetery personnel, I'll answer. You know, but I, I think cemeteries look a hundred percent better than they ever have in many administrations. So we got a lot of other work and administrative we got going on now to these cemeteries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Peyton Farrell. Mr. Farrell, your two minutes will start immediately after you state your name and address for the record.
Peyton Farrell, eighteen thirty-one Bead Place. I'd like to say that I am very disappointed with you, council. The mayor put his recommendation out there for you all that he wanted to be on it, so I don't need to commit. Mr. O'Ree, you just got here, you gonna turn down another minister to be put on the fantasy zoning commission? You all got a problem. I got issue with you all, you all that turn him down. Plus, some of those people that's on there, I bet you all don't even know them. It's, it's crazy the way you all show up in here. Y'all got some poor character, really have. I'm disappointed and I'm gonna let y'all move if we can't come around here. Cause I'm gonna be out here, believe that. Because I see what you all about, y'all are not working with the good old boys. Okay, in this case, I hear you told me a story earlier when I was standing in the phone. But guess what? When I told you, when I told you that I don't like people when they do the cryptic thing, and I'm standing again, I don't like it. What y'all need to do, the, this, this administration and the previous administration, this matter is great compared to what we had. You councilmen and the other councils that we had wasn't great and you all not great now. And I'm not afraid to see because I see what I see.
What was that, that statement you made?
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it, you missing my time.
Yeah.
Anyway, what I, just like the airport, the airport should look like the morning that I'm enjoying. Many grants came through here among the previous council and you, some of you got sick of it now. But you all did not see that that money was spent properly to go in that airport. General Chitty had to ask for nothing to go in airport because we had ten grants came in here to fix that airport and you all would see that for taking care of it. I disrespect you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Richard Brister.
Yeah, we'll get him real back.
Mr. Brister is approaching the microphone with about two minutes immediately starting after you state your name and address for the record.
Richard Brister, nineteen thirty-two Dewey Street. First of all, to the head supervisor, I don't know a lot about Mr. Kipper's father. All I know is the last thing that they fixed, the one link with the master was there. I came around there and before they hit the contract out, is it possible that y'all could have blew on the line? Because the line is not perfect, the line is leaking. I know all the part, but I know that it's leaking. And when they tested it, I told them it's gonna leak again because it's too heavy. So maybe y'all could have blew on the line and, uh, we stopped the problem, stopped the leak. Because it's potentially leaking because the lines are too high, so this is just, um. I wanna say real quick, that we need to stop this. Mayor, there's a lot that you can do to stop a lot of this, what's going on. I know you probably don't wanna hear it. Most of the time, like, y'all waited, got up and said something.
Boy, the ball, it's supposed to be addressed to you.
Uh, I didn't say that when, when I was talking.
He had to say that.
It's supposed to be addressed to you.
What have I said?
Hang on, he, he hasn't said nothing negative against the mayor yet.
Oh, it's supposed to be addressed to you.
The council, council.
Oh, okay, 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 all right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was, I was.
And just the council's a whole lot, stop the time while we get that straightened out. Go ahead, go ahead, Sully, I'm sorry.
Uh, you can't come in here and say anything about the mayor. If you say anything about the mayor, your man, you, you hate him, cost the black man, it's not got to stop. Cause they always is not true. If we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna come together, we got to stop a lot of it. And mayor, you can stop a lot of this by how you treat, talk back to the council. They only gonna pay your mouth and your man. And so, I, I'm not saying it's true or wrong, mayor, or what you, what you trying to do. But I'm just saying, it's gonna keep on, keep on going back and forth, back and forth. And, and nothing, nothing goes, nothing goes up. And, and y'all do work with the mayor. Like I said before, y'all not real through everything the mayor said to you.
Thank you.
And I wish I could say more, I know they have worked. Go ahead, you go ahead.
Thank you, Sully. All right, next we have, this will be the final participant for the evening, which is Mr. Donnie Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, as you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. This time will start immediately, two, it will start at two minutes anyway. I can state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Donnie Sullivan, six twenty-two Union Avenue. First question is, where are these good old boys at? I've been here seventeen years, I haven't seen a person. I mean, I think y'all are running ahead of each other, uh, the, tonight showed that that two minutes worked. And I'm still trying to figure out what the last thing y'all, what they could, they're doing so wrong. I mean, you gotta keep checks and balances in place. But y'all wrong, the mayor not, the mayor wrong, y'all. I mean, you just gotta be to equal liberty there. And, uh, as a, and you can dis, you can disagree without disrespect. And I'm saying that to everybody in here, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. That concludes public participation. At this time, we have administrative remarks. Anyone from the administration, which to speak at this time?
Sure, so I'm gonna start by saying good evening to everybody. Uh, just to run out of a few events that we'll be having this summer. Uh, the first of which will be June teen, our second annual June teen block party at the Twenty City Hall here from five to nine P M. on June nineteenth. Uh, pertaining to the Fourth of July, everybody knows that when we came in, administration donated, uh, to the different youth sports leagues around the city. Well, the honors came back and told us that we weren't allowed to do that. Even though, uh, the city had always been giving different organizations money, uh, but I guess it's not about, I guess it's about who you give the money to. So we gave it to the kids, uh, we got in trouble about it. But that also brought up the American Legion. So historically, the city has, um, donated half of the funds for the city fireworks show that the American Legion hosts on July fourth at the mill. This year, the city will not be donating, um, because we don't wanna run afoul of state law. Therefore, we'll be hosting Fourth of July festival, the Cassin Park Fireworks Show will start at nine P M. at night. But the festival will be from five o'clock to nine o'clock. We'll have live entertainment, uh, I think they have like a karaoke plan. It's a lot of different stuff for the kids, so bring them out. Uh, lastly, for events, we have a second annual get back to school badge. Last year, we had over seventy-five organizations participate. This year, we're aiming for a hundred. So we're also gonna be requesting that the council, um, sets up a table to give giveaways to the kids. Uh, we can, you all can get together on what you would like the city to purchase for that table. Would like to have you all out there. Uh, pertaining to the police chief selection, everybody knows that we're getting ready to pick a new police chief for the locals and police department. We have named a selection committee, um, they have met once. Uh, the next round will be interviewing candidates. And then at that point, once the committee votes, they'll be bringing that recommendation to myself. And the nominee and myself will have a town hall so that the city can come out and meet this person. Uh, we will have private meetings, um, our two-on-one, two-on-three meetings, um, with the council so that they can meet the nominee and ask any questions, whoever the nominee might be. Youth Corps, um, starts June nineteenth, so please be on the lookout for the kids working on the side of the road. Please, if you see them, give them some water. Last year, we had a group of residents following, students around posting pictures of the city bus. This year, we had a drop in interest, I guess partly due to that. Uh, but please encourage these children, we're trying to give them positive, um, avenues. They're helping us clean up the city. Lastly, not least, I just wanna address, uh, these two daily news articles that came out today. One about overtime. And they named employees, called different employees out, all part of the administration. But as we have stated, um, as I have been saying since I've been here, overtime has been a problem in the city. The legislative officers, when they sent the official administrator here, when he left in two thousand twenty-one, he left a report. If you go read the report, it states that overtime has consistently been a problem for the city. But it seems as if with all other things, everything is the sky is falling around here right now. When these things have been going on for so long. This article mentioned people calling a city faggot out who's been here for over thirty years and has faithfully served this city. But they didn't mention the individual fire who has over ninety thousand dollars in overtime. They didn't mention a police officer who's run up a tab, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, forty thousand in overtime. Everybody looks in public records, request, request all of the records. Don't splice and nice what you want to have a headline because your organization is failing. And pertaining to Bogus Rebirth, um, I, I didn't take too common to that article because as I have stated to Mrs. Ducon over email, I don't pick on citizens. It's a lady who sued me to take me on the ballot. If it was up to her and her regime, I wouldn't even be sitting here. But guess what? When she comes to pay our water bill, I give her a hug, we talk about different stuff going on in the city. So I despise that notion that Bogus Rebirth is being targeted. What has happened is that we have some concerns, we have a meeting coming up on Monday and we wish to ask those concerns out there. I won't bring it out to the public, I won't do you how you did me. Uh, and I think that pretty much concludes. Like I said. unless anything is a dire emergency, we won't get done right now until a budget is passed. We have to be held accountable to a county. And when the auditor's asking questions, the councilperson, I'm gonna step up and say, well, I asked him to cut this, or I asked him to come do his work. To citizens, I receive a lot of different complaints. We post positive stuff. We're replacing the lawnmower fleet. We're doing this. Oh, I need this on, on this street. That's not an, that's not an operate. Call to y'all, put in a public work order request. If that work order is not fulfilled in a timely fashion, which most of them are, even with a smaller workforce, then you call the mayor's office. I can't respond to your social media fifteen requests about come put rocks here, come do this. There are channels for a reason. Please follow those channels. Last but not least, Ms. Grant brought up something that has bothered me for me for about two months now. She stated there's a prohibition in the charter, um, against council members, um, trying to direct administrative operation. There are plenty of you that call my staff day in and day out. You're taking off the things that I have them working on to tell them, oh, I need this report, I need you to do this. From now on, in accordance with the charter, if you have any complaints, if you need any information, put in a public records request, that doesn't work, or if you're not requesting specific records and you need information, call me. Everybody knows my cell number. Go on other days, talk to my staff. I need them to focus on what we have to do. Thank you.
Okay, look at that. Anyone else in the administration, which to speak?
Can I ask a question?
No, ma'am. We've done a couple of participation. Thank you. Uh, next, we've got, uh, council remarks. We're gonna start tonight with Reverend O'Reilly. Okay, all right. Uh, Councilwoman Douglas.
I would say good evening, thank you for all.
Okay, Councilwoman Mary Smith.
I would like to take the time to thank everybody for coming out once a year. If you have any questions or concerns, my phone number is nine five, five seven zero, seven one four five. Um, I always try to be a person of, um, reason. And so to you, um, Mr. Keep the Mayor, yes, I, I did vote for you to be a part of, um, the board. And the reason being is, you sit over there, you're at it. You yell out, you say all kind of things that sometimes are very hurtful. Sometimes I can take constructive criticism. But I thought it would be a good idea for you to work with others in the organization so you can have a little bit more sense of respect, not to yell out, to be obedient and to be respectful. And a lot of time, we run out of groove when we're working with other, others in a diversity setting. Um, to Mr. Roberts that y'all have exposed, Mr. Tobias, you're absolutely right. And I'm glad this is China or... I forgot.
Russia.
Russia, thank you. Um, and you're absolutely right. We do need everyone who's able to vote to go out and vote. Your voice does need to be heard, but please make sure you're able to register to, to vote, to voice your concerns. Because as I look back on my call list, I hear a lot of people come and tell us the yays and nays, what we're doing and can't do. But y'all may even risk it to vote. So he's absolutely right. Please go out, sign up and vote and voice your opinion. So I just wanted to address that. To everyone who took the time to come out and have the courage to get up and speak, um, definitely thank y'all for that. Thank y'all for showing an interest in the community. Now, to use this platform to address some issues, I was voted in as the councilwoman at large. So yes, I'm gonna take the rest of my time to, um, announce. So y'all have to call, um, each other on the phone and make little negative statements. I have no problem with Pastor O'Reilly. No, I did not vote for him to sit there for this little part time because in my heart, I wish he could sit here for the rest of the two years. And yes, he is overqualified to sit there. The citizens voted him in for two consecutive terms, so that does speak volumes. But I have nothing towards, negative towards him to say, nor do I have anything towards him, negative towards him and his wife. I think they do a good job of running their business as well as volunteering, helping outside of that. They do youth ministry. If they see someone struggling, they will call him to the side and have prayer with them, and it, it takes a lot. He walks around town. He's walking, he's talking, he's meditating, he's helping others. You ask him, do we need a ride? No. He don't need a ride because he's doing his, I would call missionary work. But to stop the rumors, I don't have no problem with him. Just because I didn't vote for him doesn't mean that he's not qualified for that position. I wish he could sit here the rest of the two years. When I talked to him, he said, I don't even want to sit here, but out of goodness of his heart and obedience to his calling, he took the chance to have that seat again, and I commend you for that. Uh, once again, let's continue to pray for each other. Let's pray for the city. Let's pray for the mayor and his family. Let's pray for the councilmen. Let's pray for everyone. We have to pray for each other, and he do us all the work. We just can't get up here and y'all can say, well, she thinks she... No, I'm not quite there, but the Lord is working on me. It's a lot of things I may say, at times I may say something you may not like. But I will come back if I did you any, any wrong or wrongdoing, and I'm big enough to apologize to anyone. I don't want to fight anyone. I don't want to have no beef with anyone. That's something that I don't take pride in doing. And if I can't help you, I'm gonna sail away from you. So when you're calling me, I need y'all to be calling me about things that we can do to help move the city forward. Or things to help me move forward as, as a female, as a mother, as a human being. Not to call and ask me why I don't like the pastor, because that's not true. I have nothing against the pastor. And he'll tell you, he has nothing against me. We talked, talked before he even got here. So I just want those rumors to cease. Thank y'all once again. If y'all have any problems or concerns that I, the councilwoman, may be able to help or even do a volunteer, even if you need a ride, if it's something you need me to do that I feel in my power, as long as it's not being freely legal, I'm willing to help. Once again, my number is nine eight five, five seven zero, seven one four five. And people, people, we must do better as a community.
That's right.
As a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, thanks.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for attending the meeting tonight. Thank you for your comments on tonight, constructive and non-constructive criticism. Uh, I do listen, and, uh, I would like to say this, this language again. Uh, prayers out to our city and our lead brief family. Uh, we have a lot of people losing folks these days, so let's just keep each other up in prayer as a community. Also prayers for, uh, our Bogus, uh, executive, administrative, and our judicial branches that we have here in the city of Bogalusa. Always indicate that we are a mayor, council, form of government. Those of you that may be familiar with the charter, we check see balances. We're not here to work against the mayor, and I believe the mayor knows that. We're not, we're here to work together for the citizens. If you read the organizational chart, the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. I want to also indicate that, uh, just the mayor indicated, we do have a police, uh, chief test that will be administered on June sixth. And our local, uh, civil service board has selected those applicants, uh, based on qualifications from the municipal fire and police civil service laws. And, uh, with that being said, just praying that, uh, we have the right person that will be put in place. The people that have won the fourth, that they take their test, their scores will come back to us, and we will go from there to the state. Everyone will have their, their selections and their interviews on these people uh, as a police chief. Uh, I'd like to give you a timeline on the twenty twenty-four budget. We did meet, uh, on last, uh, Friday. Uh, and we've had a meet periodically about the twenty twenty-four budget. So the budget is available for review. We will send a paper as of last week. And, uh, we're gonna have another, uh, meeting on June seventh. And, uh, it'll be at eight thirty. And on June eleventh, we'll have a public hearing on the twenty twenty-four budget. And on that same day, we'll have a special call meeting to introduce the budget. On June eighteen, we will have a vote on the budget. Moving along, uh, we also have a meeting on economic development. Uh, committee will have a meeting on Friday, uh, June seventh at, uh, five thirty. And we will be discussing, uh, contracts. It's open to the public. Everyone is invited to come. Uh, I had an inquiry on the crime cameras, and I spoke briefly with, uh, uh, Trevor about it. But the question was, uh, at what percent are the crime cameras used? And what percent are the cases resolved as a result of those crime, uh, cameras? And, uh, he didn't have numbers for me, but I'm looking to get numbers as we utilize those crime, crime cameras that we voted on, uh, I believe the year before this, we voted on, on them. Also, uh, on the body cams, uh, there's a question on the body cams. Uh, from what I understand, they are used twenty-four seven. And they are, uh, anticipated and getting up, updated, uh, body cam. Uh, they're requested, and once we get to do, uh, chief in, chief police in, from what I understand, we may be getting more updated body cams. Uh, the, the crime cameras, they're mounted throughout the city, and they're used, uh, to follow, for follow-ups of crime cases. And they're used to monitor, uh, certain areas. I was also, uh, asked, uh... Oh, and that, back on the budget. Uh, I did speak with the mayor earlier in the week, and I did give him our proposed, our proposal for this, this budget. So, I mean, for those of you saying that we're not working with the mayor, you know, as someone mentioned, the individuals need to stop. They really need to stop. Uh, after, after, uh, from what I understand, after the review of the crime camera videos, I asked what percentage are used to resolve the cases? And, uh, how often are crime videos subpoenaed for the case? Also during our finance meeting, uh, we discussed the decorum of our, of our rules for the council. And I just gave a brief synopsis. I'm not gonna look at the entire, uh, view tonight, but there was a resolution, resolution fourteen fifty-two that was done January seventh of two thousand and thirty. Then we have a resolution fourteen fifty-five, January two thousand and sixteen. Then there, there was amendment in two thousand nineteen. So our council rules have been in for a while. And if any of you would like, uh, any of the council rules or audits on the council rules, uh, let me know. I do have audits that our secretary will, will publicly request, and we can give you our history, rules of decorum, and enforcement of our decorum while we're here in the, uh, in the council chambers. We also discussed, uh, the percentages of, uh, where we were, were with our fifty, with our fifty percent of our twenty twenty-three budget, if we were over or we are under. And, uh, Mr. Bailey did give you a synopsis of that. We will have our meetings out on, on the, uh, my home news where you can hear the audio of our last meeting, and you'll hear the response to that. Also, we talked a bit about our twenty twenty-two closeout. Now, with the twenty twenty-two closeout, we're three weeks away from the twen... Now, that was last week. So hopefully tomorrow, we'll be, we'll be much closer to that twenty twenty-two closeout. But that is something that we must have done in order to move forward with our contracts and with, with our grants. Uh, and with some other, some other types of, uh, transactions that the city has, has to be done. But right now, we are operating off, uh, twenty twenty-three, fifty percent of twenty twenty-three budget. So hopefully we get that done. Uh, I did speak with our CPA, and she is anticipating on getting some information uh, from our, our auditor's DNA so they can start, uh, with our... So she can start with her portion of the closeout. And once she's done, the legislative auditor checks to finish their session of the closeout. Um... I did ask what percentage of, what percentage was between payroll versus our operational costs. And Mr. Bailey did discuss that and explain that to, during our meeting, that, uh, we do have some operational costs that have been put in place versus our payroll costs. So we should be pretty, pretty good with that. And, uh, finally... Uh, it was supposed to, we had a positive fund balance by the end of the year. And he indicated that possibly we'd have a, a positive fund balance by the end of the year. He, he worked on the twenty twenty-five budget starting, I believe, in August sometime yesterday, August, for twenty twenty-five budget that he's, he's already prepared to do. And we have to prepare to get this twenty twenty-four budget. We have to with twenty twenty-three closeout as well. But I just want to give you a synopsis of what was going on with the finances. Looking forward to our public hearing and looking forward to our two meetings this week. The economic development as well as our, our budget. He has a couple more meetings that he, he will be working on, and I think we might be getting a budget, a updated budget uh, tonight. It's just on Friday. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this time, I want, uh, to declare a special call council meeting for Tuesday, June eleventh, at five thirty P M. for discussion of only the re-introduction, uh, introduction of the twenty twenty-four operating budget for the city of Bogalusa. Once again, this will be Tuesday, June eleventh, at five thirty. The only thing that will be discussed at that time, well, or introduction at that time, will be the twenty twenty-four operating budget. Uh, right. And it'll be a public hearing as well. Uh, next, we have some, uh, birthdays. Councilwoman O'Reilly, happy related birthday. My daughter is in Vegas. Congratulations and happy birthday to you. Uh, Councilwoman Temples is not here tonight. Hers was, uh, is coming up pretty shortly in June. And Mayor, uh, happy birthday to you. I know yours is coming up very shortly. Uh, and I want to wish you a very happy birthday, sir. You're welcome. And, uh, I want to remind y'all, the rain has stopped outside. That's a blessing. Uh, but I will keep this in mind, uh, June, your very best efforts. As you see me, and some of y'all have seen me, I don't mind picking up the litter stick and clearing off, uh, three, four, or five blocks at a time, picking up litter when I have time. I have to do my council job, another, two other jobs, plus take care of my city and this and that. So these things are in rotation every day. But also mindful when somebody throws out chickenpox or something like that, everybody loves to draw. Especially after, you know, everybody here is trying to keep up the evergreen playing and keep that stuff out of those ditches in front of your house because it's gonna play a very important role. I'm very, very serious about the upcoming storm season. There's a lot more to worry about than hurricane, these guys. Uh, also, uh, just keep this in, keep this in mind, uh, as we go through the budget. The budget will be voted on, um, June, June eighteenth. So, and so we're having our finance meeting this Friday at eight thirty once again. So with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and cut this short. Y'all have a good evening. Thank y'all very much for coming. Keep that special call council meeting in mind, June eleventh, yeah.
Eleven, yeah, bye, brother.